Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting Work Session, Monday, August 8, 2022 at 4:00 p.m. I'd like to call the meeting to order and do a roll call, please.
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Councillors Olson.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Betsy Johnson.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
All members present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Gabe. Business from the public. Persons wanting to provide comments may submit written comments or register to speak at the City Council Meeting by and by date before noon of the day of the meeting or appear in person at the meeting and register to speak using the signup sheet. We have currently two people that signed up, Vasili Razakis, and they gave no reason. Is Vasili here? Is Vasili here?
Yeah, I'm here. George Diamond's with me as well. I could only put one name.
Okay. What's the other name?
George Diamond.
George Diamond, okay. Thank you. You have three minutes, sir. Whoever's going to speak first? The same topic? It's the same topic?
It's the same topic.
Okay, three minutes, please.
George, you're on mute. Go ahead. So this is George Diamond. We're the ones that developed Edgewater Village. And, you know, we've been talking to staff in the city for a couple of years on that vacant piece that the city owns, right next door, project there. We wanted to find out, it's about, I think it's about a city block, and we wanted to find out if you guys are interested in selling it. We're interested in buying it. But it would be, we'd want the city to get a appraisal, and, you know, then we'd take a look at it, and we would develop either town homes or single-family homes on that property. And one thought is since we know that there's a parking lot for the tavern next door, so, you know, we're open to either buying half the property or all the property. So I just wanted to let you know that. Vasili, do you have a map real quick you can put on there? What we're looking at? Yeah, I think also we're asking to, because I believe the staff, because it needs to be voted for surplus property, right? So that's why. Yeah, so I'm asking the city to put in a surplus property. And see if you would consider it.
So I don't think we allow sharing of material from the outside. So did you send it in?
Oh, that's okay.
Did you send it into the city?
We want, there's no way I remember it from before. I did not see an ability to share it. I'm sorry, I could have shared the picture. Basically, if you think of the city block, we threw two scenarios. One of them was where half the block was the parking lot, which would be along the railroad tracks. And then the other half, which contains the portion of the property that we still own, we would just develop either half of it or all of it on that block.
So I would ask you to send your information. City Manager, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You'll recall that the council considered this property, I think about eight months ago or so, and where you left it, that was suspended until you could talk about what the desired use of the property was. You have not yet done that. And we can bring that back for council discussion at your convenience. And if you want me to, we can go ahead and schedule that for some time in the next couple of weeks.
So council, we'd like to talk about that in the September 14th or the next August meeting. September 14th? The September 14th work?
Sure.
So can we put that on the agenda for September 14th? So we'll have the staff bring it back to us on September 14th for discussion, and hope to see you here for that.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. That's, is that something that we're actually invited to be a part of, or is that something that you do yourselves?
Well, if you, let me, I'll have the city manager have the staff contact you and figure out what you'd like to present, and if it makes sense, we'll go ahead and do that. Okay?
Okay.
And just a reminder, Mr. Mayor, that we will probably, the council probably need to have a discussion before that to decide which direction you all want to go.
Right.
Of course, every meeting is a public meeting, so the Diamonds can attend if they would like to, but we need to have a conversation.
We are fully in person, but we also do this, like you're doing right now. We're doing a hybrid setup.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And we'll look for information on the agenda coming forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Patrick Wazniewski.
Wazniewski.
Wazniewski, sorry about that. Speaking on the topic of psilocybin. Three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Hi, and first, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. My name is Patrick Wazniewski. I'm an Oregonian, born and raised. I have lived in Albany for seven years, and I love mushrooms. My purpose here today is to provide some details about the psilocybin rollout in 2023. I want to make clear that I am not a subject matter expert. I'm not a mycologist. I'm not a therapist. I'm not a doctor. But listening to the previous city council meetings and talking to my peers, it's obvious that there's a lot of confusion and maybe some incorrect assumptions with how psilocybin can be used in Oregon next year. I'm not a subject matter expert, but I am hoping to become a psilocybin facilitator once licenses are available in January 2023. And I'm paying attention, I'm paying attention to the OHA and watching the rules as they're being made. So I'll take a brief thing here and say, my favorite mushroom is the Pacific Golden Chantrelle. They're fun to hunt. They're great to eat, and they have more natural vitamin D than any other fruit or vegetable. The Pacific Golden Chantrelle is the official state mushroom of Oregon, and I don't know if you know, but there are only two other states with official state mushrooms, and I bet you can't tell me what they are. Not California or Washington. So just some details about what OHA is considering for the psilocybin. One, for clients, any person over the age of 21 has the right to consume psilocybin under some specific conditions. A prescription or a trip to the doctor is not required. Any and all psilocybin activities must be done at a licensed service center. There won't be any dispensaries. There won't be any mushrooms on the street. And if you are under the influence of psilocybin, you must be in the care of a psilocybin facilitator. It's interesting, what a lot of people don't realize is that a facilitator doesn't need to be a therapist. All they need in order to become a licensed facilitator is a high school diploma and the approved training from OHA. So it's not doctors. It's not psychologists. This is for equity purposes, to make it cheaper for people wanting to take part in these services, and it's kind of a non-directive approach. We don't want people with only high school diplomas, you know, doing therapist roles and doing psychoanalyzing. And last, I want to talk about what the rest of Oregon is doing.
Thank you very much. We are, we are receiving information from OHA and from our staff on this matter. And I do appreciate your input today, but we're going to talk about it on the next, actually, Wednesday night, we'll be talking about it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Plus, it's also on tonight's agenda, so we'll be talking about that more in depth then.
Will he be able to talk about it at that meeting?
No, this is business from the public.
This is business from the public right now.
Well, yeah, but he's only going to get three minutes when we're discussing it?
Yeah. He said it's three minutes.
I mean, when we are discussing it later.
I haven't, I haven't talked about that yet. We have some flexibility to allow that.
Well, I'd like to hear what people had to say about things myself.
Okay. But we haven't gotten our full download yet, so we're going to take another advisement. If he's going to speak later, we'll allow him to do that.
Thank you.
But, but we need to keep the meeting moving, and repeating yourself is not going to happen. Just get our information and move forward. So next up on the agenda is Judge Reed, going to talk about the municipal court update.
Good afternoon, and I will try to keep it under three minutes.
No, you have more time.
Good luck. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come and speak with you folks this evening. And I'd like to introduce September Ridgeway. She is our court supervisor, and she does an amazing job in keeping our courts running so smoothly. We have, in addition to her, she supervises four other staff members there in our court, and just, we have a very smooth-running, very flexible court. If you have questions of me that I'm not able to answer, she, I'm sure, will be able to answer. The reason I really wanted to come speak with you today, start with a conversation I had with Peter Trodezen a few months ago. And I'd been reading, as you folks have, about the difficulties that we have of repeat criminal offenders here in our city who seem to be repeating over and over. And I, my concern is that people may be coming to you folks and saying, why, as you councillors, can't you do something about that? You know, you're councillors, you're the elected officials. Why can't you do something about that? I've been approached and said, you're the judge of the city of Albany. Why can't you do something about that for us? I want to just give you just a little bit of background about the reason why we are doing what we have and the limited resources with what we have. Recently, there was Senate Bill 48, which was passed by the Oregon Legislature. Senate Bill 48 prohibits the chief or the sheriff, who are both present in the back, from physically arrest, well, they can arrest them, but they have to cite them and release anybody who's charged with a misdemeanor. And even, does this even apply to some nonviolent felonies? Most nonviolent felonies. So, so, so somebody could go out and they could shoplift and be cited, and one hour later, go back in that same location, shoplift again, be cited and released until they come down and see me sometime, and then go out and maybe do an assault for, which might be beating up somebody out in a parking lot, not serious physical injury, but physical injury. And again, they're just going to have to cite them. Can't take them down to jail. Can't hold them in jail. Can't say, okay, this is your fifth time that this has happened today. We're going to hold you and take you back in so you can see the judge tomorrow and hold on to you. That cannot happen. And again, I'm not here to point fingers at anybody. I just want you folks to understand the constraints that we are under, and that it may help you folks be able to address constituents who ask you these questions. So that's the first thing that's been passed, Senate Bill 48. The second thing is that we, as our court, we're really under constraints as to what we can do in holding people. For example, anybody now, and this really started since COVID happened, so we're in our third year now, since March 8th of 2020, we started this, that we can, if somebody fails to appear in our courtroom, and we generate a warrant for them, either the sheriff or the chief or their associates pick up somebody, they can't take them into custody. They have to give them a site. And I often ask these people, when they're having, maybe they appear finally in front of me on their 10th warrant, they finally decide to come in and check with us. Folks, this is not an invitation. This is an order for you folks to come in and see me and talk to me about this case. Nothing we can do about it, so. And so every time that they get cited, and every time these people, the agency has to go out and arrest somebody for not showing up and saying, go down in there and see for us down there, or in the court, he wants to see and talk about it and see if you can get your case resolved, they don't show up. Then we issue warrants. September and the staff need to prepare these warrants, put them on the outside of the files, send them to APD or Lynn County Sheriff. Sheriff gets them, generates them. It takes their staff time out there to say, okay, nothing we can do on you, even though you've not shown, and I'm not exaggerating when I say you've maybe not shown for 10 or 12 or 14 times during these, on just this one charge, you just don't appear. Go down and see the judge. They don't do it, but they have to generate the paperwork. Even that many times, they still can't take them in and hold them into custody, because we just don't have the resources to be able to do that. So we're working with the constraints we have. I often threaten people, though, with jail, and it seems to work some of the times, but not all of the time. But it just, we're just generating a lot of paperwork, unfortunately. I just want to let you know that we do have constraints. And I hear it, and I'm sorry that you folks might be getting some of the blame on, that I get blamed for, and everybody, the city gets blamed for it, but we're really working within the constraints we have. Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Counsel, any questions? Counsel Novak.
So you say this is because of Senate Rule 48, correct?
It was Senate Bill 48.
Senate Bill 48.
Well, Senate Bill is different. I really spoke about two different things. So Senate Bill 48, which just passed and became effective, I think it's July 1, July 1, these two are more experts than me and Peter's, saying that, yes, if, if, I'm going to pick on September, September gets charged with theft, too, shoplifting somewhere, and she's done it 19 times before. All that we can do, or all that can happen to her, she's either given a citation, or she's cuffed in the back of the car, goes down to booking, gets booked, and then released and said, come in and see me in four weeks from now. And, and again, and so she could go, that's why I say, and she can go back and do the same thing two hours later, and the same thing happens. And then two hours later, and then she can elevate it up to an assault charge, or harassing, or go out standing in the middle of the street and causing all kinds of ruckus. Can't be held, though.
Well, just because something's on the books doesn't make it right. So we live under lawlessness, because there's something ridiculous on the books. So the people of Albany have to deal with lawlessness on a daily basis, because there's something on the books.
Passed by the Oregon Legislature. Just effective July 1, 2021.
That doesn't seem right to me, because just because there's, you know, there was a law on the books at one time against interracial marriage. Just because something's on the books doesn't make it right. And I don't see why, when something is so clearly lawless, we have to abide by it. I just can't wrap my head around this.
Well, I can speak for myself, and as well as I'm sure these two law enforcement officers. You know, we're sworn to uphold the law of the state of Oregon, and the Oregon Constitution and the US Constitution, and that is the valid law, whether we agree with it or not. That's what we are required to do. And so I'm sure they would respond the same way.
And we have, excuse me.
And please, do you want them to, I'm happy to have them come on up and talk. Yeah, come on up, please. Chief, chief, can't hide back there, chief. Come on up here.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Judge. As Judge Reed said, there is Senate Bill 48. There's, there's a few caveats. It's not quite all doom and gloom, but I don't think it's what was intended by the legislature. So basically, what it did is it gave us a guideline. It gave orders to the judge, basically the state judge that rules all the state judges. A lot of people don't understand that our circuit courts are actually state courts. They're not county courts. And so what it, what it said is that all these people we have to keep before they are seen by a judge. So everybody who gets taken into custody, we have to have them seen by a judge within 72 hours. Traditionally, we had the ability to keep those people until they saw a judge, if we had a room at the inn. We had the ability to, if we decided, okay, this one's becoming more problematic in society or in Albany or wherever else that is, they've been causing problem after problem, we had the ability to say, okay, we're going to keep, hold on to this one. That local control has been taken away, and this is a law that was passed by legislators. Now, I am 100% in agreement with you that it's ludicrous. When I look at the law, and I actually sat with the, all of our local chiefs and state police, basically what it has done, even just the, where they've put certain crimes, that you can assault a police officer, and we have to let you go. If you commit basically a contempt of court for not paying your fines, then we technically have to keep you, once they come in the door. That's what the rule is. And so we have been working with our local agencies to try and find some reasonableness to that law. And so if they have somebody out there that is simply on a contempt of court, even though I know it's a big deal and people should be paying their fines, maybe that's a better one to cite out, because there's going to be others that we have to keep. And so that's what we're working with. I would love to just say, let's not do it, but then I'm basically exposing all taxpayer dollars to lawsuits and things, because now we're, and probably myself, to actually criminal charges, because now I'm unlawfully keeping someone against the law. Again, I can't say that I agree with that, but that is what the constraints I have to work with. I mean, I could go on about, you know, some of the drug laws we have and other things that I wish we could do other things with, but the laws are the laws that we have.
May I ask one last question?
Sure.
Please.
Are these laws in keeping with the Constitution of the state of Oregon?
Well, the Constitution doesn't really preclude someone from, it's, there's nothing in the Constitution saying I have to take people to jail. The Constitution is all about protecting people's freedoms, and often that's interpreted about not going to jail wrongfully. There's nothing in the Constitution, I mean, I guess maybe you could loosely interpret, interpret the, you know, you know, pursuit of happiness, or, you know, protecting property. But there is, there typically, most of your constitutional interpretations are going to be that we're not seizing people, which is what we do when we keep them in jail unlawfully. And then the states get to make laws to decide that, and then the courts decide whether that's constitutional or not.
So part of the problem, I think, for me, listening to this and reading the bills, is that tort reform needs to happen, because this is opening us up for tort claims, and lots of them. That's my position on it. I would like to hear from Chief Hardin before we ask the council for, let me ask Betsy, Counsel Johnson, you have something. Please go ahead and ask.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll wait until Chief Hardin has her say, and then I'll ask my question of all three of the officials, okay?
Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing as well, and I know that the judge touched on COVID and how that's affected the jails. I'm very much about us getting back to putting people in jail when we can. And it, you know, just in the last, gosh, was it eight months now that I've been sheriff, we've increased the population in there by 60, because that's an important thing for me. And it's not about that I wanted to see bodies in jail, but we all know there's more than that out there that need to go to jail. But what has happened over the last two years is we have had COVID, and I kind of talked about this a little bit last time I was there, is that what that has done is it hasn't just redefined our jail, now that we're kind of getting back to where we can open back up to our full capacity. It has also affected the courts greatly, and particularly the state courts. Up until about two weeks ago, where I normally had three or four homicide suspects awaiting a trial, I had 16 that, we just had one that actually got sentenced, or two that actually got sentenced to prison. If you compound that by other Measure 11 and very serious person crimes, that is a great portion of what our makeup is in the jail, because they've been awaiting trial for so long, because the courts have been backed up for COVID. So until we can work through those people, sometimes these smaller ones, and I am totally sympathetic to some of these failed-to-appear people, I know we have, I've talked with our DA's office, and we have a couple females in particular, where, which has always been kind of our pinch point in the jail. We have a much smaller female bed space than we do male bed space, and females are traditionally committing more crimes than they did in the past. And so we have several females that do. They have, you know, 15 failed-to-appears. But the original charge is, was a misdemeanor, and so I've got to make the decision, do I let someone out that's either, one, being sentenced, and they get a huge reduction in their sentence after a court has already ruled that, or do I let someone out that has a more serious offense? And that's not always the case. We actually have, are starting to have some, some space for some of those failed-to-appears. We have people in there now that are serving time or awaiting, because they failed to appear, but we're just having to work through all of that cycle before we can just open the doors like we used to. And I'm fully committed to that. I just have to do it in the right way. We just, you know, sometimes I was just telling Marsha or somebody else today, I don't know, I feel like sometimes it's two steps forward and one step back. Last week, we had outbreak in the jail of about six or seven cases, that now we have to manage that population and isolate that population. It's, we're obviously gotten a lot more experienced, unfortunately, at that, so the good thing is, is that we're not clearing out cells like we were in the past. We're handling that much differently than we did. But we're, we're getting there. It's just a very slow road until we can get the courts. I have one, one person that's been awaiting homicide trial. By the time he goes to trial, he'll be in our jail for four years. And so when he's taking up that bed space for four years, it really limits, you know, and again, that just compounds to all the other ones, it really limits the amount that I can have, and I want to let in for some of these, these crimes that are nuisance crimes for our city or county.
Thank you, Sheriff. Chief Hardin?
You don't have to sit very close this time. New mics. This is a very frustrating law. It's frustrating for the sheriff's office. It's frustrating for the courts. It's frustrating for, for the men and women in Albany Police Department. We go out there with the intent to try to do our job and make sure people are safe. There's a lot of frustration we run into. Just last week, somebody was upset because there's somebody smoking something from a glass pipe in front of their house. We get there, and it just looks like we leave. Well, Measure 110, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, that's all we can do. But if they have warrants for their arrest or something like that, we have a critical decision point here, where even though they might have warrants for the arrest, which generally are for failure to appear, and some of our people have 25 warrants or more, both at our court and the circuit court, we have to make a choice. Do we want a potentially violent person that gets released from the jail, because we have to book this person in? So it's always a decision point for us. It is frustrating. Just last week, somebody who's a law enforcement officer from another state sees somebody shoplift $500 worth of meat from Walmart, and they got a license plate and a good look on the person, and Walmart goes, not worth their time, because the police department, that's what happened to the person. Not just because we're not doing our job, but that's the appearance that comes across, but because they know that really, if most are going to take it, the plate was from Idaho, they'll never go to court. And there's no sanctions when they go to court. It is definitely not the sheriff's office. And I, and I need to remind the council that we are in two counties. So I have two sheriffs, two jails. Both are dealing with the same thing. The Benton County Jail, which is very small and outdated, this is really going to put a burden on them because of these regulations and who they have to hold and who they have to let go. So that, and that's something that the voters are going to probably have to address. But again, it's, it's a frustration all the way across. And to be able to not put people in jail that really need to be in jail, and I get the intent of Senate Bill 48 was to bring about jail reform and bail reform. How it was actually implemented is really nonsensical. You can lie to a police officer, and it's a mandatory hold. You assault a police officer, it's a release. That makes no sense. And so we're seeing people go on violent type offenses, whether they're low level or not, but held on just because they didn't show up for court on a suspended driver's ticket, or didn't go to court because they shoplifted. It just makes no sense. So what we're asking people to do is contact your state legislators and come up with a fix. This isn't going to work. It's actually putting a weird burden on the sheriff's office, and it's really making it difficult for us to do our job.
Yes.
That last crime that you mentioned, those are called victimless crimes, correct? When someone
When someone lies to a police officer as opposed to punching a police officer?
Yeah, you could refer to that way. It's resisting an officer is a mandatory hold, but assaulting an officer is a very rarely do we have just a flat-out assault on a police officer. Usually, it's an assault that's related to an arrest. But yeah, you're right, there are some things, some driving offenses and things like that that are criminal that are seen as victimless.
Pretty in that, you know, the judge mentioned property crimes. Pretty much any property crime, including burglary, is an automatic release. And now, with that said, and we've had a lot of discussion, and again, we're trying to craft this in a way to where we get back and can still do it. The whole point of Senate Bill 48 was to create what was the appearance from the legislator's, at least, perspective, certainly not mine, of a sense of equableness, that, you know, just because you couldn't afford to pay bail, then you shouldn't be out. It also, there was a big push of not allowing people that haven't been convicted stay in jail. What has happened, though, is, again, they put this grid together, and it doesn't make any sense, because I think what society would normally deem as pretty serious crimes often can be held. Now, with that said, if you have been convicted of a prior property crime, then you can be held on any property crime, which sounds like good news. However, that means even if you were to steal a candy bar at Walmart, and 10 years later, you steal another candy bar, I now have to hold you, even though I got to let the guy who just assaulted a police officer out. If and again, it all starts once you come into the doors of the jail. We are starting to take in some failed to appears. We are starting to take in some of these property crimes that I feel like we've done a better job, even despite, I think, what Senate Bill 48 brings to us, on the communication with the different agencies, that, you know what, if you have somebody that kind of meets that criteria and is just being a pain in your community, we'll try to figure out, we'll run their criminal history, which isn't typically what we do when we arrest people, and we'll try to figure out if we can hold them. But again, that hold is only for that first 72 hours until they see a judge. And, you know, then it's up to the judge of whether they're going to release them or not.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other councils have any questions? Counselor Smith? Counselor Kopczynski?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson, yes.
May I ask, with your permission, the sheriff and the chief to comment on the rise in crime that we're currently experiencing, and if there's any link between this and that rise?
That would be.
And I realize that's speculative. We don't have social studies to back it up.
I feel like the last two years with COVID and just the constraints in the jail have definitely affected that. When, you know, the bad guy knows that we weren't going to take them to jail, they're not really going to care if they trespass again or do some of these minor crimes. That's why it was really important to me to start increasing our capacity and allowing those back in and increasing that communication between the agencies so that we can work on who those problem children are that we really need to try and take on. Senate Bill 48, you know, threw a new wrench in that, that, you know, we're going to still I'm kind of I'm kind of one of those people that you throw me a challenge, and I'm going to try and find a way around it. So, you know, we're going to try to be creative on looking at those criminal histories. How can we move them from what what they call a category one or two, which are the releases, to a category three? Because there is some ways that we can do it. I just have to do it without, again, taking up space for that hardened criminal. And we're making those waves. I think that things are moving that direction, and I'm going to continue to push that direction. But I have to also do it with keeping the taxpayer dollars in mind, making sure, especially like when we have this COVID outbreak, which I think we're about almost over, that we're keeping the safety of our staff, and we have a duty to keep the safety of the inmates in mind.
Thank you. I have a question for the city attorney. Is there anything the council can do to help mitigate some of this, some of these programs or some of these issues?
When it comes to being able to hold people in jail, no. I mean, we could pass laws in the form of ordinances through the city, but that's not going to do anything. I mean, we're still going to have our hands tied, or the jails going to have their hands tied of who they can hold. The judge is going to have his hands tied of what he can sentence him to. He can sentence somebody to 10, 10 months in jail or, you know, on a on a Class 8 misdemeanor, but the jail likely won't be able to hold them, depending on what it is. And the thing that's, I think everybody realizes, but I'm not sure that the lawmakers in Salem realize it when they did this law, or maybe they did, is that when we're talking about equity, we're not, this isn't just people on drugs committing these crimes or homeless people committing these crimes. And yes, there are those, but, I mean, this is anybody who does this, and we we're not holding anybody. I mean, we're not able to, to, you know, keep people in jail, and it affects us, you know, with prosecution and what we can do, where we're somewhat becoming a fine court, because that's really what the teeth we have in our court is, is financial penalties. And even and even the lawmakers are trying to do stuff with that. So it's it's very frustrating as a prosecutor. I know it's very frustrating for the judge and law enforcement. But kind of what Chief Harden said, what the council can do is talk to their representatives, because the people who make these laws are the people who are being elected, and the people who are running for, a lot of them are going to be running for office again in November. And if people start letting them know that this has affected communities, and, you know, that maybe that makes a difference. I would hope so.
So so thank you for that. I'm going to talk to the Oregon Mayor's Association this Wednesday or Thursday, Friday and Saturday, about this issue, because it's a problem for all of us. And I imagine each mayor is feeling like their police departments and their sheriff's departments and their judges or courts are really been made effective by these laws that were set down by the legislature. So I do appreciate your input, Chief Sheriff. And also, Counselor Johnson, I see one more question.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all three of you bringing this to to the public's attention. And you answered one of my questions of what can we do? And yes, it's context legislature. You know, I think every city in Oregon has to do that. One person can't do it, two people can do it, but maybe all the incorporated cities or anybody. But let me ask both of you, Chief and Sheriff. Okay, so you can't hold them if they trespass and they steal something from your property. Okay, what would happen to the property owner who filled their backside with buckshot?
I think I'll answer this one.
Sure.
You're the one that's.
My grandfather's favorite was Rock Solid.
No, you know, I mean, that is, that's the frustrating part, is that, you know, basically, the courts are going to decide, and it's going to be higher courts than than your city court, is and the DA's office, was that reasonable force? Probably would be deemed not reasonable force considering the the nature of the crime. I totally understand the sentiment, but that probably would not be considered a good thing to do. I do want to touch, though, is, you know, you talked about some of the reasons for increase in crime, and I truly believe that COVID and the jail space is one facet of it. And I know Chief Harden wanted to talk about maybe a second facet that we're seeing.
Yeah, I'll come back. I'll grab my materials. But we are, our crime is up across the board in the city. As far as violent crime is concerned, we saw a little bit of a bubble or a delay from what other bigger cities saw, but I don't think we're exempt by any means. And there are a number of factors that drive that. I was really hesitant to come out and talk about Senate Bill 48, because I don't really want the bad guys, more bad guys, to know that, yay, I'm not going to go to jail. But there's it's a bigger picture item, and if the mayor will give me half a second to grab my other materials and come talk to you about Measure 110.
Please do. So so are we bleeding into Measure 110, which is the next topic, or?
Yes.
I'm kind of feeling like the judge, are you finished, Judge?
No, I'm satisfied.
No, I mean, I didn't know if you were done with your presentation.
Pardon me?
Because you were on the agenda for your presentation.
Yes, I'm finished unless you have further.
Okay, okay. Because it's kind of blending into.
Maybe I'll have some input.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I want to make sure we've met your request.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Chief.
All right. I think that in March, you got a presentation from Captain Jerry Drum about ballot Measure 110, which came into law. The intent of it was to basically reclassify user levels of drug usage from misdemeanor crimes to a fine, with the intent of trying to push those users towards treatment as opposed to incarceration. For your first and level, first and second usage contacts with the police, I would absolutely support the fact that we don't necessarily want to put these people in jail. We have enough problems with people going to jail. But there's comes a time where they need some level of accountability so they can move forward. What ballot Measure 110 is, it diverted a lot of money through our marijuana taxes and other taxations into intervention programs and treatment programs. You're just now seeing that money start roll out, and this law's been on the books for over a year. I checked with both our circuit court and with our municipal court about the compliance with the tickets. Just to back up for a second, if you get caught using cocaine, smoking heroin, injecting heroin, taking fentanyl, the most you can get is a $100 ticket, or you go through a health screening. If you don't pay that $100 ticket, nothing happens other than you go to collections. And eventually, that will happen with most of our folks, because we're seeing almost no compliance with paying these tickets, very, very, very little. So there's thousands of tickets have been written in the state, including Lynn and Benton Counties. Very little, less than 8% statewide, have partook in any sort of treatment. The frustrating part is that you have people, like the one complaint, where somebody is upset because somebody's smoking something from a glass pipe outside their house, and they don't know what to do about it. Or even last week, Mayor Will recall from a national night out conversation where a neighbor was driving down one of our city streets and somebody's passed out on the sidewalk. There's very little we can do from at least an accountability perspective. We'll certainly give the person help and like. One of the things this council and the citizens of Albany should be very concerned about, and I know that there's lots of discussion on the county level, is for the years of 2019, 2020, and 2021, we had seven overdose deaths in the city of Albany. This year, year to date, we're already at seven. That should concern all of us. There's really not much that we can do on a user level. What we can do is start attacking it on the supply level. Now, we do have a narcotics task force here that that is housed at the Albany Police Department, it's made up of Albany Police, Lynn County Sheriff, OSP, Sweet Home, Lebanon, and the DA.
Is Benton County a part of that?
No, we run out of Hyde County, although their staff, a lot of times, will assist our detectives on it.
Okay, thank you.
Staffing, just like anything else in law enforcement, is a challenge right now, with our neighboring agencies having some staffing issues. But in the meantime, pretty much all the task forces have been doing is running all over Lynn and Benton Counties, chasing down overdose cases. And we have the overdose death, the detective goes out to every overdose death. We also go out to ones that are our saves. So Narcan was used or something like that. As you probably saw in your email from city manager, we're trying to get law on the books, is again, a way to contact your counterparts in Salem, is that we need a substance abuse or a controlled substance homicide law in this state. Right now, if if I were to sell so many drugs and they died, there's no criminal sanctions other than drug dealing that can come back on me. So if I know I'm selling fentanyl and that person dies, there's nothing more that can be done to me other than potentially a drug conviction. Oh, and by the way, under Senate Bill 48, just drug dealing alone is a non-hold at the jail. So if you sense a little frustration in my voice, most definitely, it's a major concern. I think it's driving a lot of our property crime. Again, crime going up has a lot of factors. Has societal coming out of COVID, coming out of the pandemic. It has the knowledge that you're not going to go to jail for many things. It has to do with drug use being fairly wide open. The other thing to consider, if you want to put a personal note on it, is earlier this year, we went to an overdose call where a young child forced entry into a bathroom to find their father dead, which orphaned three children. He died of a fentanyl overdose. So that's the ramifications to the city if we don't end up doing something more about it. Is it within the power of this council to change ballot Measure 110? No. And what you can do is making sure that you're keeping up that pressure to address this law. I don't think you're going to see repeal ballot Measure 110. I think the intent behind it is a good one, but it certainly has to be fixed so that there's some level of accountability back in the law, because some people aren't going to go to give assistance on their own. They're going to need that push in that direction. So that's where the citizens of the city and of the county and of the council can put some pressure. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Counsel?
If I can, too. I would just not that I want to correct, but it's actually 0.8% that are going to treatment, that are actually following through with any kind of treatment.
So 8% are paying their fines and 0.8% going to treatment?
0.8% have contacted a treatment center. Out of, I think it was almost 2,000 or just over 2,000 people that were cited.
So it's supposed to be like an honor system type of thing?
It is absolutely. So the the health assessment that she talks about is literally a phone call. They can say, I am using drugs every two hours, and I'm hooked as heck on heroin or fentanyl or whatever else it is. And the counselor or whoever's on the other end said, yes, I recommend treatment for you. You really need treatment. And they can say, I don't want to, hang up, and that's it. And they're done. They don't have to pay their $100 fine or anything.
They made their obligation to make that phone call.
And and I can say that I think that, you know, obviously, the fentanyl and the overdose is a huge crisis, but when you're talking about crime spikes, you know, the staggering numbers of property crimes that are tied to drug use, and now there's no consequences for that drug use, that just, you know, I look at I look at the times that we would take the small amounts, and, you know, I started when it was felony, it became a misdemeanor. Even if we take that misdemeanor, again, if you put Senate Bill 48 aside, if you take that misdemeanor and you stop that cycle for even a minute and maybe make them sit in jail, go on probation, those are the avenues that people are actually going to hopefully get forced into help 99% of the time, or probably a little less than that. If you force someone, they're not going to do it. But I think it's that it's that moment in time that you stop that action where they may decide to rethink their life, and maybe this isn't where I want to go. But without any of that intervention, that they're just.
Accountability.
Yeah, and there's going to have to be something else in their life that's going to stop them, because it's not going to be any any outside influence.
One final note on fentanyl. It is, we're seeing it in almost any substance. We're seeing it mixed in with marijuana, with some of the edibles. We're seeing it, there was a case over in Corvallis, where it looked like tar heroin, but it tested completely negative for any heroin whatsoever. It was a fake presentation and had fentanyl and killed an individual in Corvallis. So it's it's in everything. And we're doing a huge campaign, as much as we can, getting in front of schools, getting in front of parents, just to educate, you know, so one pill can kill type campaign. And that's the probably out of all the drug uses out there is really concerning to all of us. We're using Narcan at extremely high rates. We're going to overdose calls. We're tracking them in the in the county and in the city. So we know kind of where the trend is, and it's definitely going up.
So I would be happy to support and speak out with you or go to school. I'm in the schools. I do talk to the young people. I do talk to the kids. So if you need me to do something, just let me know. And I'm sure the council would support that as well. Okay, Counselor Olson.
Do we have any idea where the fentanyl is coming from?
Usually, it's almost always generated originally out of Southeast Asia, and it comes in through Canada and through Central America into Mexico, and is crossing over from there. When I worked in the Seattle area, it would actually come right in through the. When I worked in the Seattle area, it would actually come right in through the U.S. mail.
So if I decided I want to try fentanyl, I have to go to Canada or China or someplace?
No, it's coming into the country usually. They'll either come in as powder form, we're seeing it, and raw powder form, it actually looks like Kool-Aid kind of crystals is what we're seeing now, or they'll sell it as fake pain killers. One of the areas where we're seeing people that are struggling with pain management can no longer get those prescriptions for opiates because they're controlled by the state so tightly, is they're buying them on the black market, assuming that they're oxycodone or something like that, and then they're dying from that. But we're not even seeing that anymore. It's coming in all sorts of different forms now. So in this thing, you'll see blue pills. That's how we typically would see it. Now we're seeing it just in raw powder form coming across. An overdose case in Heritage Mall, two girls don't even live here, and they just happened to stop in Albany. I had picked up some powderedized fentanyl and there's an overdose in the car. We had somebody in the Burger King, overdose in the Burger King. So it's almost a daily occurrence, and it comes in all sorts of different forms. But you're generally going to buy it. The kids are buying it through social media. And that's what we're trying to get into the schools and making sure the parents are paying attention to what they're buying online, usually Snapchat.
Well, you're missing my point. My point is, you're going after the people that are using it, but are you going after at all the people who are selling it and distributing it?
Absolutely. We have a Hyde, a high incident drug trafficking area. Lynn County is a designated county.
And are you putting them in jail?
I'm sorry?
Are you putting them in jail?
As best we can. Senate Bill 48 doesn't allow us to put drug dealers in jail until they go get sentenced for prison.
So.
It's a no-hold.
So that's a minor offense, selling drugs?
It's still a felony, but the way that Senate Bill 48 is structured is that that is not a category three, meaning that I have to hold them. That is something where they can get out on conditions. In fact, it's not like they can get out, I have to release them on conditions of, you know, don't commit more crimes.
Particularly if they have plenty of money to get the right kind of attorneys and so forth, no doubt.
And that was where, you know, honestly, with the bail system in the past, your dealer often could bail out, where sometimes the user wouldn't be able to bail out, even though they were almost never kept anyway because of our jail space. But, you know, so now the dealer doesn't even have to post bail, they just get out anyway.
With a ticket.
Really?
Well, with a court date.
I think we're missing the problem here. We're going after the poor little user.
Well, but we're not.
And you're letting the guy that sells the stuff.
Yeah.
It reminds me of the problem with heroin.
We have no ability to go after the user because that is a violation, so they cannot go to jail. We are going after only primarily the dealers now, and we still can't put them in jail or keep them in jail because of Senate Bill 48.
Yeah, but yet our jails are overflowing, at least in Benton County.
Well, Benton County has, I think it's about 40 beds, where we have 231. Again, I was presenting here before what that actually means, because 231, unless you, I always refer to it, the perfect Tetris game of getting everything lined up right, you're never going to see 231 people in our jail because I can't put, if I have more females that need to go to jail, I can't put them in an empty male jail bed. So you're going to have some of those empty beds. If I have, you know, the 16 murderers, I can't put them in the same cell with somebody who's in there on, you know, contempt of court, didn't pay fines.
So are you prevented from publicizing who it is that's peddling this stuff?
So there's still an inmate roster.
I don't see anything in the paper.
Yeah, there's still an inmate roster that is on our website, and it shows all charges of the people that are currently in jail. We are prevented by other laws that were passed a couple of years ago to post their mugshot anymore, but their name and their charges are still there. Now, I know that the Democrat Herald in particular and some of the smaller papers, they additionally will publish major convictions, you know, just kind of things of who was arrested, you know, their daily logs that they do. So that can all still be published of who was arrested, for sure.
Well, it's a different topic, but I tickle the death to see Alex Jones publicize in the paper for what he's been doing. And I think drug dealers ought to be publicized the same way, if at all possible.
If we could get the media to pay attention to them, we would be glad to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, media, I think, well, I see the media writing something down here, so good for you.
Counselor? All right, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Judge, for your presentation today. We will wait to hear more information from you. I will definitely be talking to my legislator about this issue as well. Can the city or can the council come up with the language to send up to the legislature?
We can certainly, we can certainly come up with a draft for you.
Counsel, would I support a draft? Ray? Would you support a draft language for this legislature?
Oh, definitely, yes.
Counsel Bartholomew? Counsel Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll do. And can I get your permission to ask the judge one more question?
Please, please do.
Okay, so Judge, I'm looking at Senate Bill 48 Engrossed, which is a website of the Criminal Justice Commission. It says that Senate Bill 48, one of its intents is to eliminate statutory pretrial security release or bail amounts in favor of case-by-case analysis by a judge. So it makes it sound like you have the authority to hold, but is there some guidance that goes beyond that?
They don't get to me because they can't hold them, they send them to me.
Judge, we'll need you at the mic if you're going to speak. Thank you.
City Manager, it may say that, but they don't get to me to be able to review as to whether to hold them because these people end up having to release them, and so unfortunately.
What typically happens with laws like that is they get kind of their overall meaning is engrossed, and then it goes before a committee to design what that actually means. In this case, they decided to send it to, you know, the main judge in the state to get feedback and then send out to all the presiding judges throughout the counties of what that looks like. And that's what we came up with our guidelines, and it talks about category one, category two, and category three crimes, and category three are the only ones that we cannot release.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief, Judge.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel?
City Manager, you're going to make sure we get that document put together for us so we can look at it September? Would that work? This is probably too short a notice for the next council meeting.
Correct. We'll work on it and get it to you as soon as we can.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the psilocybin ordinances. City Attorney John Kidd?
Yes, good evening. And next, we're going to talk about, we've talked about this a couple of times, once at a council meeting, once at a work session, on dealing with the mushrooms that the gentleman was speaking about tonight earlier. So before you tonight are two ordinances. One would be, and I'll explain what we can do with them in a minute. One is an outright ban on psilocybin facilities within the city limits of Albany. Another is a two-year moratorium on psilocybin facilities within the city limits. We were talking at the last meeting about that the council tonight has three separate or different choices they can make when it comes to this. One is to do nothing and allow the law to take effect, which beginning, the beginning of January of 2023, OHA will start issuing licenses for these facilities. We had spoke about this at the last meeting. The gentleman tonight also was telling you that facilitators, those are people who will be administering the drug, will be only required to have a high school diploma and 160 hours of training, 40 of which are actually hands-on training, and the other 120 would be kind of the equivalent of classroom training. They're not medical doctors or anything like that that are prescribing it. He was correct in what he was saying about that the facility, the drug would have to be administered in the facility and used in the facility. They can't sell it, let them go home with it. They can't be used by anyone under the age of 21. So there are some similarities to marijuana when it comes to the regulation of how OHA is regulating it, but not, I'm not saying it's similar to the drug itself, it's similar to marijuana, because I don't, I don't really know. But you've seen probably some articles that have been running in different newspapers and websites of some of the cities who have elected to put a ban or a moratorium on it. I think of particular interest of where they're located with Clackamas County, put a two-year moratorium on, or put, and again, they're passing this ordinance, but they're putting it to the voters. So these ordinance have to go to the voters in November, and then the voters decide whether or not the ban is going to be put into effect. So the council can only recommend the ordinances go to the voters. If the council decides not to do that, then this won't go to the voters, and then in January, they can, they can open facilities here if somebody wants to. Doesn't mean they will. It just means that they're, they'll be able to apply for licenses at that point. There's still regulations in place by OHA, similar to marijuana, 1,000 feet from schools, not in residential area, exclusive residential areas, things like that. Right. City Manager, I wanted to remind you that also if the city elects to go that route, that the city can also institute additional time, place, manner regulations of those facilities where they can and cannot be located in the city. So tonight, I don't know if the council's had an opportunity to look, there's two proposed ordinances there. One would be an outright ban, the other is a two-year moratorium, both of which could be rescinded at any time, even if the voters vote for it. So if the council approves one of these ordinances to go to the voters tonight, let's say the two-year moratorium, and the voters decide they do want a two-year moratorium, at some point within that two years, the council can decide to repeal that ordinance. But it doesn't work the other way. So if it doesn't go to the voters, then the council can't, three years from now, decide to, you know, put in an ordinance to ban them. But I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
So Counsel Johnson had her hand up, so I'm going to let Counsel Johnson go first.
Okay, thank you.
Ray's next.
Sean, if we do the, excuse me, and you may have just said it, but there was a lot there. If we put on a moratorium for two years and the voters say, yeah, let's just see how this goes and stuff like that, now, does that mean after two years, it automatically is okay that the law goes through?
Yes, after two, there will be a sunset clause in that ordinance where after two years, that ordinance will expire, and then it's over, the ban no longer exists. So it would definitely be a two-year temporary ban.
Okay, and then also, okay, with the time, place, and manner, that's already in the legislation, is that correct, or not legislation?
Some of it, some of it is going to be in the legislation, where they can't be located within 1,000 feet of a school, they can't be located in, within an exclusively residential zoned neighborhood. I think they have to have the consent of a landlord if they're using rental properties. There's some things like that that the OHA is put in there, but at this point, I think they're still, and the gentleman tonight spoke on that a little bit too, they're still in the rulemaking of this. I don't think it's been finalized yet, but those are some of the things that are out there already, so. But the city, the city could also put their own time, place, regulation manners as well.
Okay, and that would be done prior to the sunsetting then, right?
Correct. Well, if the sunset, yeah, if, so if the sunsetting, if it was going to sunset in six months and the council said, well, we're going to allow them after, you know, the sun sets, then they could put in time, place, manner regulations at that point. And as an example, and I'm not suggesting this, but as an example, could say, we're only going to allow these facilities in light industrial zone areas of the city, or something like that, so.
Okay, so with the moratorium, it goes into.
After two years.
It's sunset. Can we do another moratorium prior to that, the moratorium sunsetting?
At that point, you would do a ban. If it turns out to be something that the council is looking at other cities and saying, wow, we don't want that to happen here, then the council could institute a permanent ban.
And that could be done by ordinance then?
It would have to be done by ordinance. It would be done by ordinance.
So the progression would be moratorium to ban or nothing, right? Or ban outright, go to the voters?
Right. Everything, everything goes to the voters, by the way. The moratorium, the two-year moratorium also has to go to the voters before it can be approved. So the only thing that doesn't have to go to the voters is that the council decides tonight that they don't want to do anything, that they're going to, they're going to let it take effect in January. That does not have to go to the voters.
Okay. Are you done, Counsel Johnson? I want to address the other counsel.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify one more thing, and I'm sorry. We do the moratorium, and you said that we can go ahead and do the ban after we see how other cities that just didn't do anything. If it really comes out to be a disaster, then we can by ordinance, by the city, and not go to the voters to ban it?
Assuming that the voters had approved the.
It still has to go to the voters.
Right, the moratorium.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And to clear that up too, if the voters vote no on either one of those ordinances, the ban or the moratorium, the two-year ban, if the voters vote no to that, then in January, they will be able to open the facilities if someone applies for a license, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Johnson. You know, the council would like to make a comment. Ray, Counsel Kopczynski was next.
Yes, I think I've got my mic on. I didn't attend the last couple of meetings where some of the comments were coming up. I did go back and watch and listen to everything, to say the least. I was quite surprised, I guess that's the most tactful way I could put it, on some of the comments that I heard. So I'm trying to figure, one of the comments I made for the orientation for potential candidates is how do we get to yes? Compromise isn't a dirty word. So I think a moratorium is a compromise, definitely from my standpoint. By the same token, I guess my biggest question is, while I would prefer not to do anything at all, just let it come in automatically, how did we settle on two years? I mean, I would think that if we can't make a decision in one year that it's working or not working statewide or locally or anything like that, I would think that one year would be ample.
Yeah, it was in the bill, it was in, it was in Senate Bill 109.
Okay, so it's not an option for us to do a one year, it would have to be two. Okay.
So we could not repeal it if we decided at one-year mark?
No, you could repeal it. You could repeal it after one year.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's my thin-itering wedge, so I'm okay with doing the moratorium.
Counselor Smith? Counselor Bartholomew? Counsel, oh, go ahead. You have nothing? Counsel Olson? Nothing? Counsel Novak? Nothing? So, do we need to vote tonight or have a first reading?
Well, in this particular case, it might be easier if someone made a motion to have one of the ordinances read.
The first time.
The first time, because I don't know which one we're going to.
Would the council like to make a motion? Counsel Johnson?
Yes, I would move that the ordinance declaring, whoops, wrong one, sorry, an ordinance declaring a temporary ban on manufacturing and service centers within the city of Albany be read the first time.
We got a motion?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
I tend to be opposed to this kind of thing, so I'll vote no.
So I'd like to do a roll call vote for the record.
Thank you, Your Honor. The question is on reading the temporary ban the first time entitled only. Counselors Kopczynski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Olson?
I'm opposed to prohibition, so I'll vote no.
Novak?
Yes.
And Bartholomew?
Yes.
The motion passes five to one.
The motion passes five to one, we had to bring that back.
No, I'll read it. I'll read it now.
You can read it now? Do we vote, we can actually take action at this meeting?
You can take it on the first, on the first reading. Okay, we're going to do it.
Go ahead and read it. Go ahead and read the first reading, please. Go to the attorney.
An ordinance declaring a temporary ban on psilocybin manufacturing and service centers within the city of Albany.
We'll have a motion?
Well, there's, so at this point, we've read it the first time. It has to be read twice to have action by the council. At this point, someone can make a motion to have it read again in title only for the second reading tonight.
We don't have to wait for Wednesday to do that?
Well, you're going to vote on it tonight, and if it doesn't pass unanimously, then we will bring it back Wednesday night. But tonight, you would, you would make the motion, so.
Do we have a motion? To read the title, the second title?
I'll move to have the ordinance read a second time in title only.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 You know what, I'm sorry. I thought that we had discussed voting for the mor, the two-year moratorium, and now.
So we did read it the first time, we had to read the second time.
So this is in regard to the two-year moratorium, not, okay, thank you, I just.
Yeah, that's okay.
Blank out, thank you. Yes.
I guess I'm struggling with why aren't we doing this at Wednesday's meeting?
Because we're probably going to get a no and have to read it automatically on Wednesday.
Okay, then I'll vote no.
Okay. So come here, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Your Honor. The question is on reading the temporary ban for the second time in title only. Counselor Kopczynski?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Olson?
No.
Novak?
Yes.
And Bartholomew?
Yes.
The motion fails since it is not unanimous.
Okay, we'll proceed this on Wednesday night. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, I do have one question for you, is that okay, regarding this issue? There was no mention of taxes.
So at this point, I don't know how, I'm not sure what they're going to do and how they're going to tax it. It's not going to be, at least as of now, it's not going to be like marijuana, where the cities and the counties are going to receive a good bit of revenue from taxing of this. I don't think they finalized how they're going to do the taxing yet, but it's not, I do know, as of now, the way it's written, local governments, like the city of Albany, cannot put a tax on it.
So that's, that's one of the issues I have with this whole thing, because you're going to want us to do something, and then there's nowhere that, nowhere that the city would receive any of the benefits of the taxes from this thing. So I appreciate you coming back on the two-year moratorium. Thank you. Business from the council. I'll start. Counselor Novak, then go this direction.
Yes, thank you. I have a message that I will read you all. This came to me this morning. I guess because I find it germane to our earlier discussion especially. It's from Mr. James, who lives by the Jewish cemetery. He said, "Good morning, Matilda. Just wanted to let you know I had someone hanging out in the camp they cleaned out across my fence. I told him he can't stay there, and they are clearing brush out tomorrow. He said he was just cooling off. I'm going to see if he is there today. My neighbor Roger was walking his dog at Talking Waters, and he's seen a homeless person laying in the parking lot moaning. He asked some other homeless people if he's all right, and they said he's always like that, and the police just dropped him off there. Just wondering if that's the dumping ground for homeless. We seen homeless hanging out behind Front Street Tavern. They are getting more and more around Winco and Waverly Park, not to mention Talking Waters. I will let you know if that guy is still there today. This problem is growing. We'll update you soon. Still no brush cleanup. Thanks."
So he was dropped off by a police officer?
That's what Mr. James wrote me, yes.
I don't, I guess the chief can speak to that, but I, that's, it sounds like that's coming from, as hearsay, from homeless people saying that another homeless person had been dropped off.
No, no, this is from Mr. James himself.
Oh, I thought you said that, that homeless people said that he is always like that.
Yes, he asked another, he asked some other homeless folks in, in the, in the area about the gentleman, because he was, I think, concerned about the person who was moaning, lying on the ground.
Right.
And they said, no, he's always like that, and he had just been dropped off there by the police.
Right, so the homeless people said he'd been dropped off by the police, so not Mr. James, correct? I mean, Mr. James was repeating what they said, but that's all I was saying, so. But the chief's here, so she could speak to it if she wants to, or.
I just know that if, if the police are being told they have to let people go.
Well, we have, we have the top dog here, so she'll address that with us.
That is not the first time I have heard that. I've had some discussions with both the parks director and public works director, and we don't condone homelessness in our parks. Our officers are not dumping them there for that sake. They may be waiting for a ride, or they may, the parks open during the day, so they can go there if they want. If they want a ride there, that's fine, but we're not dumping people in the parks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Anything else, Counselor?
No, sir, that's all I'm sharing this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes, I'd like to make a real big shout out to one of our city staff, Matt Rutger. About a month ago, he, I was contacted by a constituent having concerns about some weeds and overgrown brush on a pathway, which I was trying to figure out who had jurisdiction, if it was in private property or all that sort of stuff, ended up getting to Matt. And Matt said, hmm, you know, I'll bet, that sounds like a good project that I can get my Rotary Club involved with. And so he took the bull by the horns and ran with it, and about a week ago, his group actually did clean up that area. And so I just want to say thank you, Matt. So, you know, staff, staff does other things also that warrants some kudos rather than brickbats.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith?
Nothing.
Thank you. Counselor Olson?
Yes, I'm wondering, do we still have an ordinance about people should be cutting tall, dry grass this time of year? And are we past the date on that? And are we enforcing it, if we are past the date?
We do still have that requirement, and we are still enforcing it. So Chris Shendell is sending those letters out to property owners to have their properties cleaned.
Well, I noticed some along First Avenue, that one field in particular, the grass is getting pretty tall.
Right there up at Thurston, probably First and Thurston, that big.
A little beyond Thurston, yeah, yeah. And it reminds me of an item I saw in the news, where in England, a small little hamlet kind of a town bordering a big field of tall grass, and the grass started on fire pretty soon, and the whole town burned down. They had a couple little ancient fire engines squirting at it, ineffectively, but I think tall grass can be a, it can be a problem, so. I'm glad the notices are going out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Johnson?
Yes, nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Bartholomew?
I'm good for tonight, but I also want to tell Counselor Olson that, thank goodness, we have some wild horses in Oregon, because they help, they're actually fire prevention. So just to let you know, because they help keep the grass down.
Yeah, goats work good, too. They'll even eat the blackberries.
Yeah, the Kyger Mustang.
Yeah. So, thank you very much, and I think we'll turn it over to the city. I have nothing for tonight, we'll have stuff on Wednesday. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Smith had, did have a question.
This relates to Counselor Olson's question about the tall grass. There is no deadline on that anymore. It's, it applies year round. So if it's tall, if it's over 10 inches, it's, it needs to be cut regardless of the time of year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and turn it over to City Manager now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I won't say anything other than we have a planning commission meeting right after this, so we'll try to keep it short, and I would suggest a break, a short break.
I do recommend a break. Thank you very much, City Manager. So I'll call for the adjournment at 5:18 PM on the 8th of August, which is my grandson's sixth birthday, so I'm pretty excited about that. We're going to go ahead and take a break. Counselors Johnson?
Yeah, I should say, is there a different link for the planning?
I believe so. Let me, I think there is an agenda from them. Counselor Smith sent it out to most of us, I believe.
Let me check. Okay, if I can't find it, I'll write Peter. Thank you.
I'll send it to you, Bessie.
Oh, thank you.
I'll send it to everybody.
So we're going to recess, take a bio break, and be back here in five minutes, please.